Good afternoon. I wish to call the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order this afternoon, this eighth day of August 2022. I do want to say thank you for everyone visiting this afternoon, and I would ask if you do have your cell phones, please mute them. If they do go off, we will stop and let you answer. Without further ado, please stand for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Legions. The following is an excerpt from a prayer by Reverend J. McJilton, given on July 4th of 1848 during the consecration of the Washington Monument. "Direct us, O Lord, in all our doings with the most gracious favor and further us with Thy continued help. While we acknowledge Thee to be the Lord our God and offer Thee the services of our lips, may our hearts be devoted to Thee, that we may bring forth the fruits of holiness in our lives and show by our deed that we are Thy faithful servants. Be pleased to perpetuate our free government and continue its blessings to mankind. In Your most holy and gracious name, amen."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have the agenda in front of you. Is there anything that we need to add to the agenda? We have the approval of the consent agenda. Any questions? Any discussion?
Move to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Can I get approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is a presentation of proclamation. Madam Vice Chair?
Yes, I'd like to ask that Ms. Linda McDuffie come up and anyone else that's here for the proclamation.
A tribute, a tribute proclamation honoring John Delfiss J.D. McDuffie. Whereas John Delfiss J.D. McDuffie represented Sanford and Lee County throughout his automotive racing career of four decades. And whereas JD, being born and raised in Sanford, NC, was not only an ambassador to the sport of automobile racing, but also proudly carried the name of Sanford area sponsors on the side of his iconic #70 race car. And whereas, being an independent owner-driver, he made a living by building and driving race cars. And while he maintained his race team on a shoestring budget, JD remained a fierce competitor on dirt tracks as well as asphalt tracks as a NASCAR driver. And whereas JD was highly admired and respected by his fellow drivers and competitors alike, and earned their respect by always maintaining a positive attitude, a winning spirit, and never giving up in the face of adversity. And whereas JD was inducted into the Augusta International Racing Hall of Fame on September 29th, 21st, 2019, and on September 5th of 2022, a mural will be unveiled in downtown Sanford, North Carolina as a tribute to Sanford's hometown hero JD McDuffie. And whereas although he is no longer with us, as he tragically lost his life in a racing accident at Watkins Glen, New York on August 11th, 1991, John Delfiss JD, McDuffie's winning spirit, determination, and memory lives on. And now therefore be it resolved by the Lee County Board of Commissioners that a tribute is hereby bestowed upon John Delfiss JD McDuffie for his numerous years of representing Sanford and Lee County during his racing career, and proclaim September 5th, 2022 as JD McDuffie Day in Lee County, NC, and call upon residents to observe this day, recognizing and celebrating JD and his contributions to and successes shared with our community. Date this August, this eighth of August 2022. And...
For you.
Thank you.
And here's a couple extra copies, too. And this is his daughter Linda, and we're just gonna give her a few moments if she'd like to say anything. Thank you for viewing.
If we could before, do I have a motion to accept the resolution as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the resolution as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to thank everyone, especially the board here, for doing this honor. It is an honor. My dad loved Sanford. He loved the people here. He loved his fans, and I'm sure there's probably people in this room that's probably helped him at some point. He...I was lucky enough to call in my father, my dad, and on this day, actually last year, my mom passed. And she passed during the Watkins Glen race. My dad died 15 minutes, 15 minutes within the first 15 minutes of the race, and my mama passed within the first 15 minutes of the race, 30 years later. So I'm hoping they're proud. I know my dad was proud. I know my mom was proud to live here in Sanford. And after living in big cities, I kind of miss the small town. And I just want to say thank you to everyone. And if it weren't for these two men sitting behind me, standing behind me, they made this come true. And also Wendy, I call her my better half, she's done a lot for this, too. And I can't thank these guys and Wendy enough for helping me keep my dad alive, and I appreciate you guys keeping my dad alive. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I do wish to ask the cards that we received, will this be the mural that'll be presented?
No, this is just your own card.
Okay.
So the mural, we have a Facebook page, JD McDuffie, NASCAR racing legend. And Linda forgot to say that we're going to be endowing a scholarship, an annual scholarship, in her dad's name with the local school, the college. So we're in contact with them.
With Central Carolina Community College?
Yes.
Their automotive department?
Yes.
I used to recruit for our company from there.
Okay, well, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comments, I have with three month public comments, I have, okay, the pen didn't work well on that table, but Brian? Oh, Wendy Bryan, I'm sorry, Wendy. These rough tables.
I understand. Thank you, Chairman Smith and Commissioners. I just wanted to take a minute. I know that in your body of work, you have before you some decisions to make about the multi-sports complex. And I just wanted to give you some feedback on both a personal level and in my professional endeavors as well. So I am a softball mom. My daughter plays national level softball. We've been in eight states this summer. And before that, she represented you, Lee County Parks and Recreation, as a baseball player at Dixie Youth Districts and States, and pitched a no-hitter and a one-hitter. So she has beginnings here at the local parks and has progressed through our schools into softball and now to national level. And as you make this decision, I just want to give you about how to proceed with our multi-sports park, I want to just give you, I'm gonna be very vulnerable here, some personal numbers about the economic impact that her play is having on other communities. So this past weekend, we were in our last tournament of the summer. We were in Rock Hill, South Carolina. We arrived last Thursday and we left yesterday. We, my husband, she and I, the three of us, spent $1,952.20. I want to tell you, this morning I sat down and opened up my online bank app, and we spent $1,952.20. On average, we did have a birthday party for her while we were there, but on average, we spend about $1,000 to $1,200 per tournament in costs that are just the travel cost of being there. So for this weekend, we had 18 girls on our team. We all spent about $1,100, or $1,000 even. That would be $18,000. There were 48 teams at this tournament. That would be an $864,000 impact from Thursday to Sunday. We played on nine fields. So it was a big tournament, but nine fields is doable. You know, it's not the biggest, it's not the biggest tournament we've been to. We were one two weeks ago that had 88 teams. So it's a doable tournament, a tournament that we could host here. And I just wanted to bring that to a personal level to say, we look at a lot of economic impact numbers, but these are true numbers, I promise you. And I want you to think about, in addition to those things, as a team this summer, we have hiked at a park, we have gone whitewater rafting, we have gone go-kart racing, we have visited a zoo, attended professional baseball games, taken bus tours, and gone to landmarks and taken photo opportunities in all the cities we've been in. There's an article, now I'll switch to my professional hat, which is Director of the Tourism Development Authority here visits Sanford. There's an article that Currituck Economic Development put out that talks about sports tourism being the fastest-growing sector of the travel industry. And people, you know, when we went to Dixie Youth in Dunn and played baseball, we drove to Dunn and played baseball, and we drove home. And that's 2016. From then till now, we call it a tournication. It is, you're on vacation and you're playing ball. It's really a different mindset and a different way of doing business. That's why we visited all these places I just listed out while we were there. So it can be a huge economic impact. I definitely think the recreational spaces that this facility will bring to our community as citizens are vitally important. The park we were at this weekend had a playground as well as a walking trail. I think those are vitally important for our community. But I think with this project, we can have the best of both worlds. And I just wanted to speak tonight to encourage you to, let you know that the TDA is glad to partner and provide any resources we can as far as research, best practices. We also are members of Sport NC, so any information we can get from them as you move forward. I reached out to Dr. Crumpton and let him know that this week with a phone call. But I think the opportunities for economic impact, the funding streams that are available, partnering to develop full package experiences for visitors that were to come here to use those facilities, and being able to be creative with facility management, would allow this facility not just to be feasible, but to be extremely desirable. I know it's a lot of decisions to make as you move forward. The work you've done already has been exemplary in this, in this area. And I just want to encourage you that absolutely has a lot of benefit opportunities, I believe, that this county could benefit from. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Wendy. Next item on the agenda is old business, the zoning map amendment, rezoning recommendations from the planning board. And Amy McNeil?
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. Regarding the application by Retsch and Companies to rezone a vacant 1.96 acre tract of land with frontage on Greenwood Road from residential restricted to residential agricultural, I'm sorry, from residential restricted and residential agricultural to highway commercial, the planning board met on July 11th after the public hearing was held and voted by a four to one vote to recommend that the Commissioners rezone the subject property to neighborhood commercial as opposed to highway commercial as originally requested because neighborhood commercial was recommended by staff and the applicant's representative and attorney verbally acknowledged that this was agreeable to the applicant during the public hearing. The planning board added the condition that an updated rezoning application be submitted to staff, acknowledging in writing that both the applicant and the property owner are agreeable to rezoning to neighborhood commercial since the applicant appeared to verbally amend the request during the public hearing. This condition has been fulfilled by the applicant, and there is a letter and amended rezoning application at each of your seats. In making this recommendation, the planning board acknowledged that the proposed zoning map amendment, as verbally amended to be agreeable to neighborhood commercial zoning, is consistent with the Plan Sandley Long Range Plan designation of Village Center because this district is supportive of commercial uses such as retail stores, personal services, and entertainment, and lists neighborhood commercial as a proposed zoning district. As a reminder, the Commissioners should make two votes regarding this matter. Sample motions are provided for your reference, and the board is always welcome to draft unique motions. Also, you may acknowledge that the zoning map amendment is not consistent with the Plan Sandley Long Range Plan and still vote to approve the request, or you may acknowledge that the zoning map amendment is consistent with the Plan Sandley Long Range Plan and vote to deny the request. Also, one other item, the Lee County Attorney has reminded me that the Commissioners should acknowledge that they have no conflicts of interest in this matter prior to taking action. Are there any questions?
Questions of Amy. Commissioner Carver?
None.
Commissioner Connect?
No.
Madam Vice Chair?
No.
Commissioner Sharp?
No, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Lovick?
No.
No questions of Amy? Does anyone here have any conflicts of interest?
Ma'am?
Hi, ma'am.
No one has a conflict of interest. Do I have a motion to approve the statement of consistency with this Plan Sandley?
No motion.
Which motion? Doing the first motion?
Correct.
First motion is that the proposed original zoning map amendment asking to rezone to highway commercial is consistent with the plan. This should be, I'm reading my old notes here, should be...
I think it would be number two.
Number two?
Would you consider motion option two? I make a motion that proposed...
Okay, neighborhood commercial, I see it.
I make a motion that the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the Plan Sandley Long Range Plan designation of Village Center because the request was verbally amended during the public hearing by the applicant's representative to be agreeable to rezoning to neighborhood commercial, which is a proposed zoning district for this land use designation.
Commissioner Reeves, do you want to use motion two?
That's correct.
Motion two. Okay. Any questions? All those in favor of motion two signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Then the next item is approve or deny the rezoning request. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Should be number two.
Is it motion number two or number one? Number two?
Motion number two says neighborhood commercial. So the motion's been made that the Board of Commissioners approve the proposed verbally amended zoning map amendment to assign a new rezoning of neighborhood commercial to this site because the uses allowed in the North Carolin, are appropriate, excuse me, neighborhood commercial are appropriate for this site and align with the current adopted long-range plan. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And just a note, Amy?
Yes, sir.
Did Marshall get that corrections on those documents?
He forwarded an email to me that mentioned page 11, but it was from his iPhone, and that's all he said. But I'll be glad to make any corrections.
Okay, it just references Sanford City.
Oh, very well. Sorry about that. I, Microsoft Word and cut and paste quite bad.
I understand.
Thank you.
And it's the same on page 13. Next item on the agenda for old business is the Board Legislative Goals Discussion. I'll solicit any recommendations from the board regarding the North Carolina Association of County Commissions. The legislative goals selection will be a little bit different than it has been in the past. Before, they would throw them all in one big pile, present them to the delegates of the selection through the various committees, and then would be submitted all en masse to the main body. They're gonna do it a little bit different this year and put the proposals forward, present them to the committees, and then from the committees to the executive board, and then the executive board will pare them down for the generals, general body of the North Carolina Association of County Commissions to vote on. So it's gonna add a little more step to it, plus reduce the amount of time that the general commission of Commissioners gets together and haggles for days. So hopefully this will shorten the process. Do we have any proposals on the, from Lee County for the North Carolina Association of County Commissions? If not, I wish to turn over the gavel to the Vice Chair so that I can make a presentation. I had brought it to the attention of the attorney and the clerk before I went on vacation regarding the mandates by financial institutions from Wall Street regarding environmental, social, and governance metrics which would be used in deciding if organizations are eligible for loans, coverage, and business and such. And I know I startled the two of them because they were kind of surprised, never heard of such a thing. And I come back from my vacation and spoke to the county manager regarding it, and he, too, was a little surprised. And then he realized Moody's had submitted a regional local government's advanced economies economic, excuse me, environmental, social, governance, issuer profile scores, and credit impact scores. And what this is, is the most intense micromanagement of our credit ratings based on three factors. Those three factors are environmental, social, and governance. So instead of an objective determination of this county's ability to pay its bills and its creditworthiness, we're now going to be evaluated on environmental. I will read the items. Physical climate risk, carbon transition, water management, waste and pollution, and natural capital. And I brought it to the attention of the manager. I said, Dr. Crumpton, they're gonna evaluate us for creditworthiness based on the number of electric vehicles in our fleet. And we have over 200 vehicles? Or is it close to three, sir?
It's right around 200.
Then they're gonna evaluate us on what we're doing for carbon mitigation. Then they're gonna evaluate us on how many solar panels are on our county buildings, and on, and on, and on. So I just use that as an example. Under social, access to basic services, demographics, education, health and safety, housing, labor and income. These are gonna be metrics that are gonna measure our creditworthiness now and into the future. Governance, public sector, institutional structure, policy credibility and effectiveness, budget management, transparency and disclosure. And those are the public sector. In social and governance, they also are including the private sector. So we, as a county, will be responsible for our credit rating based on what our private sector does. Private sector and customer relations, demographic and societal trends, human capital, health and safety, responsible production. Under governance, financial strategy and risk management. Now, this is the private sector. Management credibility and track record, organizational structure, board structure, policies and procedures, compliance and reporting. Having two degrees in history and one of them intensely studying and understanding communism, fascism, and the such, having traveled to communist countries, patrolled the East-West German border for three years, and understood the bureaucratic monster that those organizations have imposed upon their citizens, as well as many of these factors of modeling what the Chinese government does today with their citizens. Each of their citizens has a social score that they evaluate them on. So what the ESG process is doing is literally modeling totalitarian states to manage and micromanage every aspect of your daily life as well as your county. And I just wish to make a motion to urge the North Carolina General Assembly to write legislation to ban the use of environmental, social, and governance metrics by the U.S. financial institutions and investment services in providing loans for individual businesses and local governments as well as creditworthiness.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion? Any questions?
I have one question. Is this the same issue that Governor DeSantis in Florida was advocating for their state legislature? Or do you know?
I do not know.
Okay.
I wouldn't be surprised.
Any other questions or discussion?
Who on staff knows about this other than what you just read?
Well, I do know that the county manager presented this.
And I sent it to the finance officer and the assistant county manager to review as well. And it is taking quite a turn from the traditional way that they rate the county. Very, I don't know how they're gonna collect all this data, or they expect us to collect that data as part of the process. The last bond rating we went through was, spent a lot of time on our financials, our history of our financials and financial outlook, and then our economic development activity and our economic outlook. So these are all criterias that, that really have never been in play before. Now they are in play. And for a county like us, who, we don't have any electric vehicles, we don't have any solar panels, we haven't gone that route, don't really know how that would impact our score and our credit rating to be evaluated that way.
So this is then effective right now?
They're indicating that, yes, sir, it's getting ready to start if it hasn't already started.
So what is your motion about? Because I don't feel...
My motion is to present it to the North Carolina Association of County Commissions for the Legislative Goals Conference for next year's legislature to act on.
I'm trying to understand why they didn't notify us. Do they know about it?
I'm sure the state treasurer knows about it.
Not the treasurer, the association.
Yes, I'm sure the association was made aware of it as well.
Did they notify you or Lee County?
No, sir. I'm sure it's gonna be a topic of discussion this week at the conference. Because it's, it is, it's something I just got two weeks ago. And it's, it's a big change, especially when we're considering going out to, you know, to borrow money after January 1st. How are we gonna be graded on this stuff?
I mean, I agree. It sounds like a big change. The other thing that sounds like is that none of us in here seem to know enough about it to offer a motion other than recommending that the association look into it. Or what are you talking about doing?
Well, this will be presented to the committee, Governance Committee, regarding legislation to restrict the use of it in North Carolina.
You're talking about something entirely different. You're talking about blocking it before we even know what, what's really going on, when it is officially effective. Why can't we find out about that first? What are you saying?
Well, this is, this is from Moody's.
You're the only one that got a copy of that.
It was, well, I want to say the county manager... It was, well, I want to say the county manager sent it to everybody.
Did you send it over here?
I emailed it to everybody. Copy, Jennifer.
ESG scores are something I'm very aware of, just in the financial industry. It's, I work with insurance companies, and it's something that insurance companies are doing with their own revenue and how they invest their capital. So it's definitely something that is happening, and we're seeing it trickle down. And it hasn't happened yet, but it's in effect, so.
Here are two people I trust. That one at the table there, and that lady sitting right back there, who's the Finance Director. That's who I trust with Lee County's money.
Right.
And I want to hear something from them, officially from them. So you can call your motion.
Okay.
Well, if I can add just one more point, the, the metrics that they're using are subjective.
I understand that.
When you take credit ratings on the old way, they're very objective. And that's what we're basing our credit rating on. But this will add, in my opinion, it will add a bureaucracy at the local level that we'll have to follow through on.
I don't disagree.
Dr. Crumpton, do I hear you saying that this is something that could be detrimental to our borrowing or things such as that?
Well, first couple of reads, yes, sir. And, you know, Mr. Reeves wants us to give an opinion. Probably the best thing to do is talk to our financial advisors, Davenport and Associates, and, because I'm sure they just got sprung with this as well.
Yeah.
And it'd be good to come back to the Board and discuss it at a future meeting. But in the meantime, you know, we're on a time deadline for the legislative goals for the Association, and I think it's worthwhile that the Association and the Legislature and the Treasurer of the state, I mean, we have more AAA bond-rated counties and cities than any state in the nation. So I'm sure it leads to low borrowing rates for us. The state's AAA rated, and I'm sure the state's going to be concerned with this as well. So there's going to be a lot more discussion on it going forward.
Could it be that we're actually asking in CACC to do the kind of research that Commissioner Reeves is asking us to do? In other words, they're not just going to adopt this without looking at it and trying to find a position that they want to recommend. So I think what we're asking is to support the idea that they look at ESG scores and how it might adversely affect our credit reports. And to that degree, I'm not sure I see anything that would create a problem for us.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, so we have a motion in front of us. All four of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Clarify the motion.
Can you restate the motion?
I'll restate the motion. Urges the North Carolina General Assembly to write legislation to ban the use of environmental, social, and governance metrics by U.S. financial institutions and investment services in providing loans for individuals, businesses, and local governments, as well as creditworthiness.
And you're sending this to the Association?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone against? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other goals that you wanted to bring forward? Okay, then I, shall I pass it back on to you, sir?
Thank you, ma'am.
It sounds like a lot of people have been asleep at the wheel.
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, new business. Approval of the updated MOU with Mr. O.T. Sloan for removal of conditions at O.T. Sloan Park.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I've been working with Mr. Sloan for about six months to get this completed. As a reminder, in 2007, Lee County acquired 9.45 acres of land located in what is now O.T. Sloan Park. It's property located behind the State Employees Credit Union. The land was purchased through funds provided by Mr. O.T. Sloan Jr. with the stipulation that the property would be used as a recreational area. Since 2007, the county has used the property as open space, and our Frisbee golf course goes across his property. The new library is proposed to go on the site, and we sought his approval and have a new MOA memorializing the change. That he approves that, and the additional property that we bought on the road out front will now be designated for Parks and Recreation use.
Any questions of the manager regarding the memorandum of understanding? Commissioner Lovick?
No, I'm good, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner? Commissioner Lavalley? Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Carver?
No.
Move to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the MOU with Mr. O.T. Sloan for removal of conditions at O.T. Sloan Park. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on, Tax Collector's Annual Settlement. Donette Fitzpatrick here. She is.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of Tax Administrator Michael Brown that was unable to be present. Each year, the tax collector must make settlement with the governing board per North Carolina General Statute 105373. This year, staff obtained a collection rate of 99.19%. As part of this settlement, the governing board charges the tax collector with collecting taxes for the current fiscal year. In this case, it would be fiscal year '23, and prior fiscal year taxes that are unpaid. The charge gives the tax collector authority to use enforced collection measures and gives legal notice that the tax lien is first priority. A report of all 21 unpaid real estate and personal property is available in the Clerk's office and has been posted and to the Commissioner's website for review. So we ask that the resolution be approved for settlement and charge be issued for the collecting the fiscal year '23 taxes and prior unpaid taxes.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Ms. Fitzpatrick? Commissioner Carver?
None.
Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Lavalley?
No.
Commissioner Sharp? Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Lovick?
No, sir.
Do I have a motion to accept settlement, adopt a resolution, and charge the tax collector with collecting the? Motion's been made to accept the settlement, adopt the resolution, and charge the tax collector with collecting 2022 taxes. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Donette and her staff should be congratulated on that 99.19%. I believe that's the highest rate ever. So congratulations, great job.
Thank you, Dr. Connect. Thank you for reminding us of that. I did notice the number was very nice. Thank you. Now we just get the other 9%. Nine tenths of a percent, I'm sorry. Next item on the agenda is the Business Commercial Use in Parks Policy.
Good evening. In front of you is a policy that staff has worked with other departments throughout the state and the county attorney on putting together something to help, an issue that we're having in our parks. Businesses are starting to come into the parks without Parks and Rec knowledge, and they're using the parks to make profit. And parks are there for the public to enjoy. So the policy in front of you is a, what I see is a meet in the middle. We're not trying to completely take businesses out, but we're giving them some structure and giving them a permit process that they would have to go through, so that way we know what's going on in the parks. But it's not only happening in the parks, it's happening at our buildings and facilities where people are renting a building and then going in and trying to sell whatever they're trying to sell. We also have people renting our gym and then charging admission at the door. So the perception of that is it's a Parks and Rec program, when ultimately it's not. So we're trying to put something in place to help staff have something to fall back on. Any questions on the policy that's presented or the permit application?
Does it state anywhere when they do that that it's not associated with Parks and Rec?
Yes, in the, in the actual permit and the policy, if it's not a...
Will the people going there understand that?
No. That's something that we would have to put a sign up or, you know, Facebook post of some sort just to educate the public that this event is going on, but it's not sponsored by Parks and Rec. And of course, in the policy and permit application, I would have the authority to not let somebody go through the permit application. So the policy also states that it has to be tied to a recreation activity.
Commissioner Carver, any questions? Mr. Keel?
What does it mean that it has to be tied to recreational activity? Because in fact, some of these people have been using it for items that aren't like that, right?
That's right, yes.
The preponderance of them, right?
So we want the activity in the park to be park activity.
Park-related.
Yes, right. Whether it's a yoga class, or a walking club, or a basketball camp, something tied to Parks and Rec that's being used at the right site.
Give an example of one that would not qualify.
Let's say somebody was selling pocketbooks. You know, we've had that. We've had somebody rent a facility and advertise our park as a place that you can come buy your pocketbook. And they show up, and it looks like it's renting my Parks and Rec.
Or using the parks for taking pictures and charging money for the pictures.
You know, another event is, you know, that, that we allow non-recreation, but I guess it could be considered in some way an activity, is the arts and vines. But they get that contract and approval from this board to do it. So, you know, the facilities can be used, you know, but it would have to be approved by this board to do something other than, than, you know, selling pocketbooks. But we've had an issue with, you know, some vending going on, food vending, without permits and that kind of stuff. You know, we cannot, we can't allow food sales in the, in the parks without a, without a permit from the Health Department. So, you know, this gives them some ability to, you know, put some teeth in the, in our, in our policies to help curb that.
So what would be our step? If we issue a permit, they say they're not doing it, you go by there and find out they are doing it?
At that point, we would shut it down.
Including law enforcement?
Absolutely. All Parks and Rec staff has tapped the non-emergency sheriff and Sanford PD's number.
Commissioner Sharp, do you have any comments, questions?
No, I agree. Like I said, I sit on the Parks and Rec Board, and we've discussed this, and I agree with what Director Keel is saying. We don't need money, we don't need people making money off our parks without approval. And we have liability as well, so I agree with what he's saying.
Commissioner Lavalley, questions?
Is this something that would be put in place immediately, or would there be a time?
And there's going to be a transition. I would like the policy to go in immediately. But like I told the Advisory Board a few weeks ago, there's going to be a transition, because there's been a few people that have rented our parks, you know, six months out. So we're going to have to go through the calendar and reach out to them. And of course, at that point, if they do not want to go through the permit application, I would give them a full refund, so that way it was fair to them.
Okay, that makes sense.
This doesn't restrict, like, the bike club from using the park, because they're not making money? They go out there, they meet, and they do a meet and go, right?
Absolutely. Yeah, this is mainly for cash exchanging hands and making profit.
Thank you.
And we can tie mountain biking really close to Parks and Rec.
No, I mean, I know some local schools may use it for cross-country, things of this nature. That's not the case.
That's right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Keel?
Are you going to post the can-do then can't-do?
Yep, and I've put together some frequently asked questions. That's, that's four of the biggest questions that I've got from either the Advisory Board or staff, or we've actually talked to some of the groups that are using our facilities and just got their feedback on it, and that was most of their questions, too. So we did, we did try to vet some of this through some of the groups just to make sure they were well aware that this was coming and that we were working on it.
I do have one more question. I know back in the old Dierapal Park, they had square dancing, and people came to take lessons and all that. Does that do away with that stuff also? Pay for lessons or pay to dance?
If somebody rented the Ingram Building and was, and was charging for people to come in to take lessons, they would have to go through this permit application. Because now they're, now they're running a business.
But that would eliminate them from being able to use the business to make...
Unless they filled out the permit application and went through the, and went through the structure.
We do offer dance through Parks and Rec, so that is consistent with a Parks and Rec activity.
Yep. And then there would always be an option, because we have in the policy, too, that it's, it could be a co-sponsored event. So if somebody could come to me and want to do a basketball tournament where they're going to make some money, Parks and Rec could co-sponsor it if we feel good about it, if we have a say in what the program is. And then in return, get a 10% cut of whatever he makes. So there's, there's, there's a lot of options there, but what this really does is just gives us that structure and gets, lets us know what's going on.
Which law enforcement agency used, if necessary, would be based on where the park's located?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All good questions. Do I have a motion to approve the Business Commercial Use in Parks Policy to include permit application?
Send it.
Motion's been made. Any other questions, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Next item on the agenda is Lee County Justice Improvement Study Discussion. Commissioner Carver?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to bring you all up to speed on the direction I think this committee is trying to work and to try to get some additional approval on some initiatives we might take. With that in mind, I'll give you a little summary. It says on July 21, "Various representatives in the law enforcement and justice community meant to consider and evaluate the processing of justice-involved individuals in Lee County, the processing of them. Representatives from the following organizations showed interest in this effort and attended the meeting: Lee County Sheriff's Department, including Sheriff Estes, Sanford Police Department, Harnett Lee County District Attorney, Lee County Attorney and Pre-Trial Coordinator, Corrections, Jail and Probation, Lee County Commissioners Lavalley and Smith and Carver, various nonprofits serving the needs of justice-involved individuals, defense attorneys, Lee County Clerk, Central Carolina Community College President, and Greg Singleton, who works with them in this particular area." The thing that I'm trying to point to is that this was really a vision at one time and came out of a conversation I had with Autumn Smith, who is our Pre-Trial Coordinator, recognizing the fact that our law enforcement and judicial effort and our justice effort in, in Lee County is robust. People work hard, they have good intentions, and they, they're definitely earning their, their salaries. At the same time, there's a recognition that there's some holes in the system that could probably be filled and make things work a little bit better. When we put out the call for people to come and talk to us about this, this is the number of people that ended up showing up, some 30-some people in the EOC to discuss these issues. I would also mention that just by coincidence this morning, we had a, an opportunity to walk through some experiences that are associated with people leaving incarceration and how they integrate back into the society. In other words, there are a lot of, there's a lot of activity in North Carolina and general, and Lee County in specific, to try to look at how we're doing this business and how we can make it work better. How can we eventually reduce the number of people coming back in the system? How can we look at people and get them resources that they need in order to, to quit being involved in criminal activity? The group recognized the dedication and professionalism of Lee County law enforcement, justice, and nonprofit personnel. However, they also recognized that there are challenges routinely experienced in the justice process that can be improved. routinely experienced in the justice process that can be improved. That's not an indictment. It's just a reality of how difficult the problem is. And we're kind of looking at it and recognizing the fact that some of these issues, because they're so involved and enmeshed, that it's hard to bring it to the table in such a way that everybody can get consensus and decide how to do better. And consequently, sometimes we turn away from the challenge. The discussion that we had on July 21, I think, led us to believe that there, there are some holes, okay? And that there's a, a lot of energy involved in the communities to say, I think we can do better. Let's look at it one bite at a time. It's a big elephant. We have to do it just a little bit at a time, and I'll, I'll address some suggestions. Some of the issues related, raised included prompt assistance for deputies and police officers confronting disturbances with people exhibiting symptoms of mental illness or drug abuse. As it was relayed to me, the idea is that the average police officer comes to service in a community with the intention of talking about major crimes. How are they gonna get involved and, and set things straight and, and protect people? Yet, they find themselves spending an awful lot of their time involved with people at a low-level violation level that includes victims. If somebody comes in and breaks your window, for example, you want to have some sort of response. But still, it puts in large measure our police officers and, and deputies in an awkward position sometimes. I, I think Chairman Smith has talked a lot about the conflict resolution training that we have. And that's fine, and it's, it's, it targets certain kinds of interactions. But we're talking about bringing assistance to the law enforcement community that might help them in this process. Low-level crime perpetrated by homeless individuals who want shelter in jail to avoid severe weather or negative circumstances. That's one of the items that the police officers mentioned is harassment for them. Overcrowding of jail facilities by low-level offenders who could be monitored by GPS tracking devices not currently available. An insight there from a physical point of view is that it costs about $61 a day to keep a person in jail. It costs about $5 a day to keep them on a monitor. Obviously, there is a, a tension between making sure that real offenders are, are removed, removed from the community and we keep a good eye on them. At the same time, we're overloading our jails with low-level offenders that maybe we could be a little bit more creative and figure out a way to maintain track of these people and still move them in the direction of getting to resources that would avoid them having to fill up the jail. Connecting law enforcement with available nonprofit resources. This would require a dependable database of services available and realistic prediction of when services can be delivered. And right now, we don't have that. We have a lot of lore on the street, police officers that know who to call and that certain circumstances, but we want to try to better define the way resources could be brought to these police officers' help in these situations and what time they would expect to be able to get a report or action back. If they're out there at 2:00 in the morning and it takes three or four hours in order to get somebody to answer the phone, that's not exactly the kind of support we're talking about. We want to beef that up. Desire to have a facility or services in Lee County similar to the one in Holly Hill where we can take offenders or people in unusual circumstances and get them prompt treatment. We have nothing that really parallels that. We do have Daymark. Daymark operates basically from 0-800 to 5:00 in the afternoon, Monday through Friday. No surprise, a lot of these things happen after dark. Additional assistance for our pre-trial coordination that currently depends on one person, that would be Autumn Smith. Specifically hire an additional full-time assistant. This asset would be available to coordinate after our handling of low-level offenders. Right now, Autumn is the person that gets the phone call at 10:00 at night. And it's, it's a challenge when there's only one person. A lack of facilities to connect resources with inmates due to overcrowding in the jail. Improvement of transition resources for inmates approaching or being released. One of the things that is causing some problems is that because of the crowding in the jail and the lack of space really to bring people in from the outside to counsel and prepare people to leave, we, just because of the overcrowding, it's, it's very limited. And we want to figure out some ways that some, that somehow we can bring these resources to bear, especially on people that are gonna be leaving soon from the jail. Necessary acknowledgement of law enforcement to victims of low-level crimes. An infraction has been experienced. If it has, then justice response is essential. We're not tiring your race accountability. We're trying to improve it so that long-term, things would improve. Okay, you've been patient listening to some of these specific ideas that came out of the meeting on July 21. Do we have an issue? The people in, in the justice community and law enforcement obviously think we do. They want us to try to somehow begin to bring people together and think about ways we can fix it. I have three recommendations, proposed initiatives that I would like the support of the Board of Commissioners. Not necessarily in the form of a motion, but maybe if you have questions, you could ask them. I'm requesting that the county manager hire a full-time assistant for Lee County Pre-Trial Coordinator. In other words, somebody to assist in addition to Autumn Smith in this arena. I'm requesting that we assign the county attorney and pre-trial coordination coordinator as liaisons to an informal justice improvement study committee. In other words, continue on the kinds of things that we're doing right now. So, we give it a name, we identify it, we say, okay, we need some help. The two people that probably are the most, are closest to the Lee County that can help us are, in fact, the attorney and, and Autumn Smith, the pre-trial coordinator. And I had discussed this with Dr. Crumton, and I think for the most part, he's in favor of that, but he can speak for himself. Also, we need to purchase additional GPS ankle monitors that can be placed and serviced when sufficient assistance is given to the pre-trial coordinator to make it happen. Right now, we have money in our budget to buy more of these things, but if we bought them today, we couldn't use them. That's because somebody has to be looking at where these folks are and be able to determine whether or not they're fulfilling their requirements. We couldn't go ahead and start putting these on people and not have a tracking system. We need people to be able to do that. That's one of the things that the first item would, would assist in making it happen. So, those three things would be suggested to be taken aboard right now. Get this committee, give it, give it some sort of a recognition of the fact that there are a lot of people concerned about this and that the, the commissioners have an interest in making sure that we have some help from staff in order to propose further actions. Anything that we might propose would come back to the board, similar to what we're talking about here. Any questions? Anybody have?
I've got a comment.
Yes, sir.
I was very interested in hearing that, is Ms. Smith here tonight?
Yes, she is.
She gets, you, you mentioned she gets called, for example, like at 10:00 at night-
Right.
That she has to deal with. And we contract with Sand Hills Mental Health, and they contract, I suppose, with Daymark. Why is it okay for her to have to do that after 5:00? And Daymark had nobody on call after 5:00?
I think the direct answer to that is that we have made an agreement with them that they provide services from 8:00 in the morning to 5:00 in the afternoon, Monday to Friday.
So, you can extend it?
Well, again, Commissioner, I think it's a question of how to go ahead and have a dialogue with them in an authoritative way that might be able to change those kind of rules. That would be another item that's definitely high on our list.
But it's so elementary. It's just common sense that things happen after 5:00.
Yes, sir. I would agree with that.
And the people that, for example, I don't know what her mental health training is, but if we had an involuntary commitment person we're dealing with, I would prefer having someone from Sand Hills and Daymark than have our own staff people trying to do it.
And right now, Commissioner, the people that are handling it are actually from nonprofits. And a lot of times, a conversation will go, or a call will go to Autumn Smith. She will then have to contact somebody in our community and a nonprofit who will then pick up this person if they're not, they're not, not if they're involuntarily committed, I think. Correct?
No, sir. The management's off and scandals all, but I-
That's, that's correct. That's correct.
But there are different categories of this thing that we need to define so we can figure out what part we can impact.
And that's why I'm narrowing my discussion to one area.
Got it.
That's a very serious concern for me and others, and especially families who have individuals who need that kind of support. It just makes common sense to have a person at Daymark available to handle those. We're tying up law enforcement when we don't.
Absolutely agree.
Okay.
And that's one of the things that, right at the top of our list of things that we would like to negotiate on. When I say "we," we're talking about the people that are trying to work with our staff and with our pre-trial coordinator, et cetera.
And one other closing point, we really need to focus on that jail. We've got people in there from six years. That's, that is not good for anybody.
I would say you're right. The thing that's interesting is that, again, we're talking about people who are quality people trying to work this problem, and yet, these are issues-
I agree.
-that come up on a regular basis that haven't been tackled. So, what I'm suggesting is that maybe focusing on it, having your support, et cetera, we can go ahead and start taking these one at a time and make some progress on it. That's, that's the goal.
I understand. Thank you.
Commissioner LaVic.
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
I would just say if law enforcement is asking for these things, that I'm in full support of it. If, if they need the help, then I think we need to look at it.
Commissioner LaValle.
Yeah, I, I was able to attend that meeting and I'm also, I also am involved with Experience 180, which is a nonprofit that deals with re-entry. And so, I, I see the issues that are happening. And I think that meeting was eye-opening because there was even law enforcement that was hearing nonprofits that were existing in our county that they didn't know about that they could use as a resource. So, I guess my question is, at this point, what are you, are you asking for something specific of our board or just bringing us up to date? I'm, I'm in agreement with all the points that you brought up, and I'm in support of what you've said. I just don't know how you want our board to proceed.
There were some options to consider, like possibly making an ad hoc committee associated with this board that would give some sort of credibility to what we're doing. But right now, we're kind of peeling the onion one layer at a time. And right now, what we'd like to do is use the, the help of the, the county attorney and Autumn to help us define exactly what direction is best to go. How can, yeah, right off the bat, you all can think of things that probably need some attention. How do we cue those up? How do we get people's attention? I, I think once we work with it a little bit, we'll get a little bit smarter and be able to come back to you with some more better defined structure on how to approach it. Not the least of which is how do we talk to Daymark in such a way that we can actually get them to change their schedule?
Commissioner Connect.
I'm good, thanks. Could I ask for the, Dr. Crumton to make a comment about what you see is happening here?
Well, first of all, I've never felt comfortable that Autumn is a, a single person in that handling this responsibility anyway. When I first took the job 15 years ago, the previous pre-trial coordinator was talking to me of what she did, and I was like, who's her backup? And when she told me the DSS director, I said, that's not, that, that doesn't work. And so, I even tried to get her to request a second person, and for some reason, I couldn't get her to request a second person. I, you know, I'm trying, it's not often when I'm offering to, to fight for someone to get a, you know, another employee, they say no. But I still feel we need a second person to do it. Asking the county attorney to cover while Autumn's on vacation or on sick leave or something like that is, is, I think it's unrealistic. And we really should have a second person in there. So, if that second person can normally not be the backup, can help coordinate these services, I think, I think it's a, it's a big, it would be a big deal for us. The mental health issue, we have, we have talked with Victoria quite a bit recently about that and the 24-hour-a-day crisis intervention team. I know we've called the crisis intervention team and actually got them to take care of an issue one time at, at some housing that the Brick Capital had an issue with. They're not always available. The team is, you know, supposed to be, have a two-hour response, but they're covering a large area that, right now. That's one thing that's a hindrance with the size of the LMEs is now they've gotten so big that it's hard to, to service the area. I think we're gonna have to work with them, you know, to, to, you know, unfortunately, I think it's gonna take some money. We have some opioid money that, you know, maybe we can put into the pot to help with that, you know, because we haven't really sat down and thought about in great detail yet what we're gonna do with that money. And, and we're gonna get some suggestions from the Lazarus Task Force and probably in September, what to do with that money. Remember, it's not a lot. And so, we need to try to get the biggest bang that we can. But that 24-hour intervention is important. It was, you know, and then getting the, the deputies and the police officers out of the hospital. You know, about a year ago, I got a good call from the city manager. He had four police officers tied up in the hospital for mental health cases. So, we gotta figure out something better with that. And I, and I, and I think Mr. Carver's heading in the right direction. We just gotta figure out how, what we can put in place to address the issue. And, and because it seems to be getting worse, not better.
Commissioner Carver, I understand you to say that you had two options that you would like us to act on, one being hiring a full-time assistant to our pre-trial coordinator, and the second one was additional GPS monitoring devices.
That's correct. I didn't know whether or not, the, the will of the board is to make this formal and make up motions or not, but those are things that we definitely need.
Would you like to make a motion, sir?
If you think that's right, that's fine. I, I move that we hire a full-time assistant for Lee County Pre-Trial Coordinator and that we, we expedite spending the money that we have in our budget for GPS monitors, once we have that person, that hire in place.
Motion's been made. Any further discussion?
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
Was Dr. McCalver a part of that?
She wasn't physically there, but the board that she's a part of, that she is the organizer, the head of, is, she was there. So, she's been, been involved and I foresee will continue to be involved in that.
This is not the position you were discussing, right?
It's not the what?
This is not the position you were just discussing, was it?
Yes.
This is the position you're discussing. Thank you.
So, do we-
Any other questions?
Do we need to buy monitors? How, how long were we thinking before?
We don't purchase, we don't purchase the monitors. We rent them.
Okay.
From a vendor.
So, we have it in the, in the budget to rent additional monitors.
Okay, you just want approval, too, when we get ready.
Right. We have, yeah, we have five that are in, that can be in use now, which I think they're all being used. Is it four, five? Or are they all in use now?
They're all in use.
Yes, they're all. So, we pay a monthly fee for those.
But I think we have seven more that we got, right, that we could order? Wasn't that in the budget?
Just five.
Just five more?
Okay. So, maybe what we're saying then is we need to get as many as what the pre-trial coordinator thinks that they can handle.
We'll work with her on it.
Right.
Motion's been made.
Helps the population of the day.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Commissioner Carver. Next item on the agenda is accessibility for Parks AFP grant for OT Sloan. Mr. Keel again.
All right. So, the accessibility for Parks program was just rolled out about a month ago. There's $10 million in grant funding for North Carolina. And back in 2018, site-specific master plan was done for OT Sloan Park that outlined the inclusive playground. And having that documentation gives us a really good chance of scoring well on this grant. So, tonight, I'm here to answer any questions about the grant, but to seek the approval to apply for the matching funds. The, the matching funds would be $100,000, and then the grant funding would be $400,000.
Commissioner LaVic, questions of Mr. Keel?
The map we got in our agenda, is that-
That's the site-specific plan that was done in 2018. If you look beside the Boys and Girls Club, that's- If you look beside the Boys and Girls Club, that's where the inclusive playground was allocated at that point.
Okay, so that's just for the playground? I, I was wondering, I didn't see your, your new T-ball complex, that's what I was.
Yeah, so that's another good thing about going through this process, we'll get to update the site plan, and it'll have, it'll have the actual T-ball complex and the library on-site.
Good.
Commissioner Reeves.
I assume you start this process applying, boy?
Uh, we're actually applying now.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Sharp.
No, I don't have anything.
Commissioner LaValle.
Yeah, just some questions about the renovations that would happen to the pool. I see renovated pool area, renovated pool house, and then pool with retractable cover.
Yeah, so that's part of the, the plan that was done in 2018.
Okay, that was the previous plan. So then the new plan doesn't include any of those things?
The, the, the grant is for the actual playground, that was a part of that plan.
Okay.
But that's all that this would cover, it's just.
Just the playground, and the bathrooms?
And the bathrooms, and then we, where we put some sidewalks in as well.
Okay.
Commissioner Connect.
I'm good.
Commissioner Carver.
I'm good.
Oh, I did have one other question. Are there other grants that could help meet the other needs that were in the original plan?
Yeah, so we just got the part-of-grant this past spring, the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund Grant. So now that we're going through phase two at Kiwanis Children's Park, once we wrap up that part of grant, we could then apply again.
Very good. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve to apply for the matching? Motion's been made to approve, for the board's approval to apply for the matching AFP grant funding? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Ting Fiber Active Cabinet Proposal. Anything to improve the internet accessibility in Lee County is welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Brandon Wagner. I'm a project manager for Ting Fiber, an internet service provider planning to expand our broadband internet footprint to service the residents and businesses in Sanford. I'm here tonight to have you consider a request as part of our expansion plans to grant an easement at the Lee County-owned property of 112 Hillcrest Drive in Sanford. As part of the previously submitted documentation titled Ting Fiber Active Cabinet Proposal, Lee County Highland Street, Ting has outlined a need for an approximately 15-foot-by-15-foot easement to house a telecommunications cabinet for some electronics, and in exchange, Ting to work with the county on providing a free-of-charge internet service to the building at 112 Hillcrest Drive for the duration of the easement, or an alternative suggestion that we work out with the county. Thank you for, for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Wagner. Commissioner Lovick.
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Reeves.
Do you support doing this? Do you support it?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Commissioner Sharp.
I'm good.
Commissioner LaValle.
No questions.
Commissioner Connect.
Just like to hear what the manager has to say in terms of the easement and supplying, or do you want to lease that spot, or what do you want to do?
I couldn't hear what he said.
Oh, do you, do you, do you want to, for some, for, for the easement, are you looking, does this look good to you in terms of supplying that Hillcrest with internet?
Well, we already have, you know, fiber to the building there, so this is really to help the public and other, and other folks, so.
So you're looking to lease that spot to them?
And in the agreement, I think there's, there's some options to use it as well.
We've had discussions with the IT department regarding this matter. I've been working with Ting regarding this request, and we went out and visited the site. I would recommend that the board authorize the manager to, you know, approve a compensation that they would deem, that he would deem appropriate for fair market value. We've discussed several scenarios. We're also working with the IT director to see what might be beneficial for the county, but we need to see if these alternate proposals are compatible with what our needs are. So that's why I would recommend that, that authorization be granted to the manager.
Part of the motion to approve is you want to give the manager authorization? Okay. I'll make that motion. Thank you.
I guess my only question is, you say you've been out to the site. If we build this thing, whatever it's gonna look like, it's not gonna be an ice or, it's not gonna offend the people who are there or close to the area, or?
No, sir, the, the identified site, if you are facing the Hillcrest building where the Colts office used to be, there's a wooded area to the left of that, and it would be right in that wooded area, that would be very, you know, inconspicuous.
Thank you.
Motion's been made to consider the request from Ting for an easement dedicating a space on the county property for an active cabinet location as part of their installation of broadband service, as well as the manager negotiating a compensation for the easement. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Moving on to managers' reports, June 2022 financials. Oh, come on, Lisa, you, I thought you.
I'm not gonna be doing the presentation, but I am gonna introduce to you the new finance director and the new assistant finance director for the county. As of July 1st, Candace Isman was made our finance director. Candace has been working in the finance department for several years now and has moved up from accounts payable entry-level position up to the finance director role, and we're very happy for her and look forward to seeing her success. And then as of August 1st, we made Jen Waterhouse, the assistant finance director. Y'all know Jen has been our fiscal recovery manager and has moved up and will still be doing those duties in addition to serving as assistant finance director. So just wanted to have the opportunity to tell you about the changes we have made and are looking forward to that. And now we'll turn it over to Candace to make her first financial report to you.
And thank you, and congratulations on both of you.
Good evening. For the June 22, 2022 preliminary financial report, just as a reminder, the sales tax revenues run three months behind. There will be additional revenues and expenditures related to fiscal year '22 that will be booked between now and the end of August. We are at 104.65% of our ad valorem budget as of June 30th, and no departments were exceeding their budget at the time that this report was created. We are up overall 12% for our sales tax revenue this time last year. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions? Commissioner Lovick.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Reeves.
No.
Commissioner Sharp.
No.
Commissioner LaValle.
Just congratulations, and you've got some tough shoes.
Yes, thank you very much.
Commissioner Carver.
I'm not sure exactly what Lisa did in order to make the sales tax work the way it was, but I hope she's passing that magic on to you. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And next item is the county manager's report for August.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna change up the order of my report and start with the multi-sports complex first. So at the last board meeting, the board approved a 30-day delay on moving forward with the construction design of the multi-sports complex due to the cost overruns that were estimated. Santiago and myself have spent quite a bit of time on the numbers and met with McAdams last week in their office in Raleigh to go over the numbers and try to figure out ways to move the project forward. So the couple of things that, you know, want to point out, first, if you compare the initial design that was presented to the public, actually, it was developed back in 2015, a lot of features have changed. Number one, we added a walking trail. We have two stadium fields for diamond and rectangle fields. We are, we have a proposed participation in the Parkway project for Ashby Village, and we added a pretty substantial playground area that did not go before the voters. The original design was for five diamond fields and 10 rectangle fields. So in our discussion with McAdams, we focused on trying to get as many diamond and rectangle fields as possible, and then using these other items as alternates. So showing the map behind us, I'll talk about the fields in color, or the port, the sections of the project in color. The green phase is the four diamond fields, and their estimate is at $10.3 million with the contingency. And I want to point out that McAdams and their price estimators had included a 25% design contingency in the cost. So if you take out that 25%, that lowers the estimated cost to $7.7 million for that phase. Phasing light blue, four rectangle fields with the contingency is 11.5 million, and without, it's 8.675 million. The playground area, which is yellow, with contingency is 2.2 million, and without is 1.65 million. And the pink, which is four additional rectangle fields, is 10 million with contingency, 7.5 million without. And then the orange area are the two stadium fields, which are 16.3 million with contingency, and 12.225 million without. Obviously, we got a little happy on the, on the stadium fields. So at this time, you know, trying to move the project forward, our recommendation is that we take the orange section out. Now, when I say take that out, that doesn't mean we wouldn't reserve that area on the site plan for future development if the county wanted to go back in and do that. So anything we say is contingency or an alternate, the areas would be reserved for the alternate, or, you know, reserving the area for the stadium fields in the future. So after we got finished, the low end for the cost of all the projects was around $51 million, and obviously, that was a little too high, so we kept working to try to get it down. So we're recommending that the board consider moving forward with the project and developing the base bid on the project with the green and light blue phases. The alternate bids would be the yellow phase, which is the playground area, and the pink phase, which will break into two phases in the bid and probably realign the pink phases. So in this, in this picture here, you can see the 16.3 for the stadium and the 10 million for the four rectangle fields on the bottom. The proposal is to flip it and create the, you see, the, the two rectangle fields then would be adjacent to the blue fields, reducing our cost for infrastructure and parking. So we feel that's a good thing to do, to try to maximize the rectangle fields. So we believe that if we do this, we're still gonna be short on the base bid, $5 to $10 million, even on the low end. Staff is, would like for the board to consider increasing the budget from $25 million to $36 million. Plus, we need to discuss whether we're gonna actually pay the $1 million for the Ashby Parkway. The board has never voted to contribute that million dollars. We've discussed it twice, but there's never been a motion by the board to contribute the million dollars to it. Another way to add a couple of thousand dollars to the construction amount would be not to reimburse ourselves for the $2 million that we've paid for buying the Poe property.
How about backing up and?
Yes, sir.
Refresh my memory on that $1 million contribution?
Yes, there were, the developers appeared before the board and asked the board to contribute a million dollars to the Ashby Parkway. So on the site, along the bottom of the green and the yellow and the pink, that's where the, the Ashby Parkway would go, and they wanted us to contribute from Broadway Road up to a traffic circle, and we would participate a million, the, the idea was we would give a million, the developers would give a million, the city would give a million. And so that was the proposal. Our board never actually voted to support that proposal.
And that property's already been sold also, right?
The Ashby property? I know it's been rezoned and a site plan approved, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure that it was sold.
The ones that came before the board are not the owners now, are they?
Yes, they were the owners then. I, I don't know if they've sold the property now or not, but I can check. But they're still helping all the development. Even though they sell the property, they, they still have a development agreement.
I got you.
And they're responsible for certain things, and I'm sure they're responsible for getting this road in. They haven't told us they don't want the million dollars, so I'm leaving it at that.
Probably won't hear it either.
So I know it's difficult for the board to understand, you know, how a project.
You talked about that, but that road at that time wasn't something we needed to be, to, to move this project forward, to make access to this.
We, the city was, is not requiring us to have two accesses onto the site, because it's not residential. It would be nice to have the two, especially when you're hosting tournaments, having two, you know, ways in and out of the site would be very advantageous, and it would also help out on Broadway Road, but it's not something we have to have.
But it may make it a little safer.
It would make it safer.
You talk about alternate bids. The $36 million would not include the playground yellow and the pink, is that correct?
It would, it would not. And, or the orange.
Or the orange.
So you're eliminating the orange, the pink, and the yellow. Now, we're talking about flipping the pink to try to get two more rectangle fields out of, out of the bid, but that would still be an alternate.
Yeah, but right now, we're looking at $36 million to give us the green and blue, and, and obviously, the site prep and all the?
Yes, sir. All the, all the soft costs. And there's a lot of work on the green area that has, property has to be leveled and shaved off, and that dirt is actually goes down to where the orange area is. So you still have to do that work, and that area is prepared for future use. But, you know, obviously, it's a little pricey at this point.
That yellow is 2.2 for the playground area?
It's not just playground. In that, in that yellow, there's a parking area, you know, for the playground. In the white box at the bottom is the maintenance office facility for the site. So when you say 2.2 million for playground, people go, why are you doing it? Well, there's, there's obviously a lot of other work that goes into making that area accessible to the public, and we also have the, the maintenance facility included in that.
I just said playground because, quite honestly, for me, it doesn't work properly if you don't have a playground down in that area for smaller kids, families.
I think that, wasn't there also a food truck area too?
Yes.
That yellow part?
What?
Food trucks.
And there's also, it's a smaller area in the yellow, but the bigger area would have been in the orange next to the, next to the stadium fields, because that's how we were going to have, have food, food and drink service to the field, to the stadiums.
So if they waive that $1 million, then that would just be 1.1, we, 1.2?
I'm sure that's a discussion we can have with the city.
I think we should.
Dr. Crumpton, as far as lighting is concerned, site lighting is just like street lighting, but it does not include the field lighting, is that correct?
We planned on doing the field lighting separate from the contract. Musco is on state contract, and we've had some success in doing the lighting on, of course, the architect designs it to some extent, but Musco comes in and they design the whole system for you, and you don't pay the overhead to the contractor for saving the overhead. So we've had some success in doing the lighting ourselves instead of through the contractor for the fields.
And is that number around $3 million, though?
For the, just for the, we believe that number's in half if, for the base bid.
I got you.
Yes, sir. Because you're not, there's a lot of lighting associated with stadiums, field lighting.
I see.
So the site lighting is not something Duke Energy would come in and do parking lot lighting and?
Sure, they'd be glad to do it, but they're gonna. Sure, they'd be glad to do it, but they're going to charge us an arm and a leg.
Yeah, I get that.
In our monthly rate, they... We've tried to do a couple of deals with them recently at the Government Center parking lot. And we were able to get a better deal by going directly to our light vendors. And because it's just... It's very expensive dealing with Duke at this point. I'll leave it at that.
But there are advantages of having them?
There are, except that, you know, the maintenance of those lights, like they used to do out at Kiwanis Family Park. The lights on the trails back there used to be part of our agreement with them. Now we have to pay for the maintenance. So it's no longer included in our fee. So guess who fixed the lights last time? General Services did. So, it just takes a while. It's number one, it takes forever for them to come out. Number two, it's very expensive for them to fix our lights now.
Commissioner Sharp, questions? Commissioner LaValle?
Well, just the point about the playgrounds. I understand that yellow section is including more things, but is there a way to have still a playground in that area? Or it would just... we would be forfeiting that and later down the road possibly assess it?
Right now, it's, you know, it depends on the bids. And that's really what I'm suggesting at this point. I think, based on timing and the way the market is changing, at least the construction market is becoming more favorable. You know, right now, if we gave McAdams the go-ahead with construction documents in this format, they would be ready to go out to bid February 1. And I think that's going to be a very good time to go out to bid. You know, of course, things can change. I can be wrong, but, you know, at least we have construction documents. If it's not favorable, we can hold them and then bid when we're ready. But I just think... and then plus, the beginning, the first quarter of the year is always the best time to borrow funds on the municipal bond market. The banks get an allocation for purchasing the bonds, and they like to spend it early in the year. And so they're much more aggressive on the interest rates in the first quarter. So, based on that timeline, I'm suggesting that we give them the go-ahead and then we just see where the bids come in.
What would that number be with the yellow?
You're right at $40 million.
Do you need a motion to go ahead?
We do.
So moved.
Motion's been... with which, the 36 of the...
With the playground.
Motion has been made to go forward with the bid or the planning for the $40 million on the sports complex. Any other discussion, question?
Yes, I have a question. First of all, I want to recognize the fact that the manager and Santiago and all have done some real good thinking and made it so that we can really understand what we're looking at. We've also had a number of people make some appeals here, one of which was, "Do not water down the sports complex plan and execute something that is subpar or does not address what the citizens supported in 2020." And there was a lot of enthusiasm from Wendy tonight on going ahead with it. This is the question I have. If we turn the clock back to where we were first considering this, and people came to us and said, "For $40 million, you can have the blue and the green and the yellow for $40 million." Is that not different than the concept that we had for $25 million where we are going to be able to do supporting local youth, economic development perks, attract travel teams, et cetera? In other words, I've done some... a little bit of asking of the people who feel vested in this, asking them whether or not this is going to work to provide that kind of facility that they can have travel teams come in here. Quite frankly, four fields doesn't do that.
I think you have to remember, those four fields are full regulation fields.
Right.
But U-12, that's eight fields. So if we were to host, you know, 12 and under soccer tournaments, which has been... and in baseball, 12 and under is kind of our niche right now in tournaments, as Mr. Keel. So that gives us additional 12 and under baseball fields with one large field for, you know, the older folks. But gives us eight fields for U-12 soccer. And actually, if you go even lower, you can get more fields on there. But that's for regulation for the older kids. And to be frankly, you know, we would need... We would need all those fields up there to be competitive in the over 12 area in soccer. And that's just not realistic at this point from a financial standpoint.
I agree, yet that was one of the big selling points because not only does it provide the space we need to play, but it also brings in the economic compensation that comes from people coming in and spending the money that Wendy was talking about. And we just got to be sober by the fact that we can't achieve that kind of goal, or at least in the opinion of the people I've been talking to, if we're limited to the number of fields that we're talking about here. The other thing is that as far as using the space, if you think about the number of hours it's available, without lighting, you really cut back on that. It really does create a problem.
We understand we have to have lighting.
Right, but that's $3 million additional dollars.
About 1.5, so we think we...
I'm sorry, 1.5 just for that.
We think we can get that in the 40. So, the other thing is, is, you know, that's why we're bidding the pink fields as alternates, is because if the bids come in and we can get those other four fields, then, you know, we're in really good shape. The thing that's really probably untouchable for is the stadium fields, the $16.3 million up there.
Yeah.
I just don't think that that's touchable at this point.
I understand.
But maybe in the future. And we should reserve the area for that.
Right.
But I think the guesswork by the architects and their cost estimator... estimators have... Yet, cost estimators have been so wrong. Let's just, you know, say that now they've really overinflated their pricing. You don't know it's really that good until you go to the market and actually bid the project. And the city of Wilmington just build... bid some fields down there. And they came in quite a bit under their architect's revised estimate. So, and Clayton did the same on theirs. So there's less work being bid right now. And, you know, we think that that's going to continue as the market changes. And so we think we hit it at the right time and hopefully can get a lot of this done.
And what I hear you saying basically is that getting additional information and seeing what the real cost is advisable at this point, if we're going to go ahead with it, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. And if we come into the low area, we're still talking about $36 million without the playground area, right?
It would be tight.
Yeah.
You know, based on the estimates right now.
Okay. Then the bottom line to me is, it's such an increase in the cost of the thing. If you just look at it sitting at the table and we're just considering this item, it's maybe easy to get enthusiastic about going forward. But when we also have to consider other things, like the master plan for the Parks and Rec business and where they want to take us in the future, and other projects that we might have eventually that we want to spend money on. I'm just wondering whether or not $36 million at this point for what we're getting is a wise choice. That's what I'm trying to express.
Just a reminder, the motion is for $40 million, including the yellow.
$40 million then, $15 million increase.
Any further discussion?
Are you proposing we spend more?
No, sir.
Oh. All right.
Any other questions?
What would be the budget impact of increasing...
On a debt service, based on great financial results that we've had recently, we don't see any impact on the tax rate by upping the number to $40 million. We've met with our financial advisors and the library, the Magnetti Morello facility, and the $40 million here, we can do within the existing tax rate.
And this... the motion before us is to go out to bid. At that point, we'd have the...
The planning.
It would be in the planning phases.
Planning, correct.
Yeah. What we're... what I'm suggesting, I don't know if this is really the motion here, is that we bid, that we go ahead and get the project ready to bid and that we get it out to bid. Now, Mr. Reeves is saying he likes the $40 million proposal to make sure we get the... as many fields as possible and the playground area with all the other things that are there, so...
But when we go out to bid, or we go bid... Can we bid all of it and then if they come down?
We plan on bidding everything but the stadium. Because we just know that that's not reachable. But we're going to bid the blues... Our proposal is the blue section and the green section and all the other soft costs is the primary bid. We bid the yellow as alternate. I would assume that we would still want to do that. And then the pink fields will probably be broken into two alternates.
Any further questions?
How much does it cost us to get the bids? To get the...
Yeah, the architectural... Santiago, can you help me with the fees on the architectural for construction drawings?
Come to the mic, please.
Yeah, just give us your best estimate.
The ballpark we're calling it about, we, on the last project we did revise, we were just at about just under 12%. And so things, some of the mechanical stuff, obviously, in the library made a big difference. And this project not being, not having all the mechanical stuff, it could be lower. So, it is flexible. But I do think that there's definitely... From what the conversation that we're having, I need to tell McAdams that we want to move forward with the design of a certain amount of structures, which if it's what I'm understanding correctly is we want to move with the design of everything with the exception of the stadium, which will help us tremendously on the cost because the design of the stadiums was very intensive. That will reduce all that cost as well. And like Dr. Krupman was saying, what we'll do is we'll prepare an aggressive schedule for bid day when we do go out to bid. And we'll break that project. We'll have the primary things that we want to do, prioritize that. And then we do those alternates. And hopefully on bid day, like we've seen in a couple of parks in the last couple of months, Dr. Krupman referenced Encino Park, and then obviously Clayton, where we saw the bids actually come in under. So in those projects, they were able to add those alternates. Furthermore, during the design phase, we'll break it down into three steps. And at the end of every step, we'll have estimating guiding us in the process. So we'll do an index, a pause at the schematic phase to make sure that the budget still aligns roughly. Then we'll do the next break, the... When we have a development phase, where we take those schematic designs and we take them to the next level. And we'll do another pause. We'll recheck the estimate or the price. And then at the final phase, when the actual construction design phase, we'll do one more check before we go out to bid and make sure that everything still lines up. So, for the next four or five months, we'll have a series of steps. We'll stop and make sure that the budget still lines up, lines up to the project before we go out to bid. Going out to bid itself does not cost anything, right? So, on bid day, you know, we get their proposals. And then that day we'll make... During that process, we'll make the determination and identify the lowest bidder. But if on bid day, the budget is outrageous, we still reserve the right to accept or refuse any or all bids, right? So, we can say on bid day, "Come spend out $100 million. Thank you for your time. See you guys in 20 years." You know, but if on bid day is something that we can work with, then, you know, it is within, obviously, the discretion of the board.
You mentioned a 12% figure. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is if it was less, 10%. Is it 10% of $4 million, $40 million, which is $4 million, in order to get us to the point where we can bid, request a bid?
No, you won't spend all that money because the construction management of the project is included in that 12%.
Yes, sir.
Their original number for basic design services to us was 2.34 million. So, you could figure maybe 2/3 of that to get us to through bid, bidding process.
So, if I understand correctly, we're looking at about 1.6 million in order to get the data we want in order to see whether or not the bidding could put us in an arena where we could afford it?
Yes, sir.
All right, the motion...
We do that with every project. You know, you make estimates and you get down to the bid and you hope you've made good estimates.
The motion has been made to lift the hold on the project and instruct McAdams to begin preparing construction documents for bid and prepare to be ready to bid by the first quarter of 2023 for the areas green, blue, and yellow to the estimate of $40 million. Seeing that we have discussed this to an end, I am calling the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
We have one opposed. Thank you very much. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Remaining part of my report, the Moore Training Facility. On August 1st, the operations of the Moore Training Facility were formally transferred to Central Carolina Community College. So CCCC is now responsible for all utilities and maintenance of the facility. But yes, we're paying for it, but we give them the money. Because that's just part of the deal. But the big part of it is now they're in control of the facility. And they'll be moving quickly on the renovations of the facility to try to get ready for Vinfast. So, it's good that we've handed that over to them. As for the hazardous waste permit, we, you know, retain responsibility for that cleanup. TerraQuest was on site for three weeks, and that ended about a week and a half ago. They were digging the contaminated dirt out and got to the in-ground tank. The weight of the tank prohibited removal of the tank. So inspected the tank, find no material in the tank. Were able to remove all contaminated soils from around the tank. And if you go back there now, all you see is a big dirt area in the parking lot. That area has to stay open for a while until testing is done. And we analyze those tests to make sure that there's no contamination present. So, you know, the project right now is about two weeks ahead of the revised time schedule we gave the board a few months ago. And we are still under our revised budget of $600,000. Update on the Horton Pool. The project stopped due to unsuitable soils underneath the bathhouse building. Additional soil sampling was conducted. The good news, after having a structural engineer go out there, is that the structure is sound. And we are doing additional sampling of the soils and trying to move forward with that project. So, the delay has been around 60 days. We expect about another 60 days to get the unsuitable soil out and put new suitable soil in. And we still have a guarantee from the architect and both contractors that we will be finished in plenty of time for next summer's swimming season. So, we continue to move along there. The Hales Center, engineering started with the board's approval after last month. We hope to be out to bid quickly on that project. And I think that's... Oh, I wanted to let the board know that the... We've not... it's hard to believe, but 10 years ago, we contracted with GFL or Waste Industries to provide solid waste services. So our contract with them is up this coming July, 11 months away. And we have put an RFP out for those services. And we'll be reporting back to the board in September, maybe October, on the results of those bids. And I think that's it for my report. I'm having problems with my computer getting down.
Any other questions for the manager? Commissioner Lovick?
No, sir.
Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Sharp? Commissioner LaValle? Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Carver?
None.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda, Commissioner comments... Next item on the agenda, Commissioner comments, and then we will be going into closed session. So starting with Commissioner Carver.
In our conversations tonight, the Sloan family came up a couple of different times. And I think when I look back on the impact that, that kindness that they've demonstrated to us over time has meant, um, it's really impressive. I'm just thankful that, uh, they've been involved in improving the county in the Parks and Recs arena. I just appreciate that. That's all I have.
Commissioner Connect? Commissioner LaValle?
Yes, I just wanted to once again thank Linda and Mr. Jerry and Mr. Eddie for coming here today to celebrate J.D. and his life and what he brought to Sanford and Lee County. It's, it's really cool to have a story like that and to, to see it brought to life. We have so many other beautiful murals, and, um, every time I drive by where it's going to be, I see all the little steps that it's, you know, being made to the mural. So excited for September fifth when it's unveiled, and just wanna encourage everyone to be on the lookout for it and be there for that celebration. Thank you again for coming today.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes, sir. Um, just to add to what Ms. LaValle said, um, this, uh, I was glad we could honor, uh, J.D., uh, this way tonight. And, uh, just growing up down in Lemon Springs and being a NASCAR fan, still a NASCAR fan, uh, I was eight or ten years old, we'd be watching races, and my daddy would say, "He's from Sanford." I was like, "Really?" He lives over there at Tramway. And, uh, so I would always keep up with J.D. and where he was on, you know, where he was on the track. And, uh, and though I never seen him win a, a race in NASCAR, I did have the opportunity to go to, uh, the dirt track down in Feville and watch him win. Him and Glenn McDuffie win many races down there. So this brought back a lot of memories for me, and I was glad we could do this for you guys tonight.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes, sir. I'm gonna have to leave. I don't recall spending that much money at one time in quite a while. I'm gonna leave. That's what I just said. Made me a little dizzy. I might have to get out of here.
Just remember, it was, just remember twenty-five million was a bond. So we're covered there.
I understand. I understand all the numbers. Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
Uh, congratulations to each one of the employees getting promotions. That's awesome to work hard, and I'm just glad you stick with us. We're a good county, and I hear good things in different departments, and, and I'm glad to see that promotions within. So congratulations on that. Thank you, guys. I was able to go to their, I remember B U yard sale the other day, J.D.'s, so it got me an old AC Delco with J.D. McDuffie on it. Didn't quite fit as a kid's medium, so, but just to get some of his memories. And, uh, I'm like Cameron, I also remember I was a firefighter for, uh, several years, I don't say it like that. And, uh, I used to get to work the track down at Rockingham, so get, be able to work down there and seeing a local driver that you really, you know, knew and could be proud of. I know that guy, even though you may not really have known him, but you knew he was from your hometown. And then to get to see the other drivers and being around them was pretty neat. So congratulations. Glad you guys got to come out tonight. That's all. Thank you.
And thank you to the McDuffie family for coming out. And Commissioner Lamond, thank you for, I, I guess you were driving this train, so we appreciate it. I do wanna recognize that our clerk is going to be moving on, and she's got a promotion coming, and we congratulate her on that, as well as our two new financial director and assistant financial director, and of course, our assistant manager, Lisa. Everybody's moving up, which is good, all within the house. It's great. Um, just looking forward to, uh, recommendations for our replacement for the clerk. Now, that being said, uh, this week, the North Carolina Association will be holding its annual conference in Cabarrus County. Uh, I will be attending the emergency preparedness training on the eleventh. It's an all-day event, and, uh, be attending as well the, uh, executive board meeting on the tenth. I do wanna commend, uh, Commissioner Carver for putting together the twenty-first July, uh, meeting we had at the emergency center in regards to, um, issues dealing with, uh, our law enforcement and those who are involved in the justice system, and very much was an input, as you mentioned earlier, that a lot of the individuals attending, uh, along with the vice chair, uh, did not know that these agencies were available. So just that networking created a, a, a flow of communications which will help better improve things. Uh, today, Commissioner Carver and myself, uh, the county attorney, and Ms., Ms. Hall were attending the, uh, transition from prison to community reentry exercise hosted by the, uh, U.S. Prosecutor Robert Lang. And I gotta admit, uh, it emphasized again what we discovered on the twenty-first with individuals coming back into the community and the barriers that they face. It was quite an exercise. Uh, we learned a lot, and we're probably going to, um, take a trip to Durham. Hopefully, we'll get that coordinated to observe there, one-stop. And again, uh, all, while this was going on this morning for the two hours we were participating in it, I was thinking, we have a one-stop system for our Sanford Area Growth Alliance, buggy factory, one-stop shop, you're coming in, development, building a business, whatever, everything's right there. Uh, we may wanna consider that down the road for individuals who are transitioning.
I just wanna throw this out, that there's a group that, private group, that wants to set up an, a, a one-stop shop here.
Yes, and it's, um, it's the, uh, I keep thinking it's one eighty. Experience one eighty, and then they have a total.
Sure, I'm gonna get their information for you.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna continue working that. Um, that being said, uh, I have nothing further other than thank you very much for the, uh, input on the sports complex, and we appreciate the, uh, if you would be so kind.
Sure. I move that we go into closed session per NC General Statute one four three dash three eighteen eleven A four to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of business, and per the NC General Statute one four three dash three eighteen eleven A six to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, or condition of appointment of a public officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee.
Motion's been made to go into closed session. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll be going into closed session. We appreciate your attending. Thank you.
I love it when a plan comes together.
Okay, we're back in session?
Are we up yet? Okay, we're back in open session. Madam Vice Chair?
I make a motion that we move clerk to the board from grade 68 to grade 73 with responsibilities to include communications.
Motion's been made. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
My next motion is that we remove the title of clerk to the board from grade 79, leaving deputy county attorney at grade 79.
Motion's been made. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I next move to make Haley Hall clerk to the board.
Motion's been made to make Haley Hall clerk to the board of commissioners for the county of Lee and the state of North Carolina. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It was unanimous, madam clerk. Congratulations, young Ms. Haley. We appreciate it very much.
So what are we doing about the deputy county attorney position?
It's her responsibility to hire the deputy county attorney.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. Who's doing it? You?
Yes, sir.
Don't worry, she'll get some help.
That's fine, you got some help.
He will be on my list.
Do have a motion to adjourn. Motion been made to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. We're now adjourned.